This conference will now be recorded.
We had a change in. Yeah, it was great. We got caught in the rain in Maryville. Had to, kids had more fun running up in the rain. They had a good time. Four children all day.
Call this meeting, this is Soudia City Council ordinance. We're going to begin with prayer and pledge allegiance. Captain Max, you have the floor.
Could you join me in our invocation? Dear Lord and Father of all, we come to you this evening to ask your guidance as the Soudia City Council, members, mayor, administrator, and staff, meeting to hear about and discuss important matters that affect our city and the surrounding community. We are grateful for their service and dedication to our citizens. We ask your protection for all of our first responders, police, and particularly the memorial, police memorial remembering those who have died in the line of duty, and for the sheriff's department, for fire department, ambulance service, EMTs, hospital staffs, all who are 24/7 to serve and protect us, often at the risk of their own well-being. We are grateful for the United States of America, our constitutional republic, for which so many have fought and died to create and preserve for these 246 years. We ask your blessing and protection for all military and civilians serving our country today, here and throughout the world, protecting our way of life, keeping us safe from threats from without, and perhaps more sadly, threats from within. And now, as we leave this evening, please protect us and our loved ones, keep us from harm until we meet again. In all this, we pray in the name of our risen Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to this republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Rule call, please.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Here.
Bogus.
Here.
Hiller.
Here.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster, Zappson, and Bliss.
Here.
First item on our agenda is a public hearing regarding the annexation petition from E.W. Thompson, Inc. regarding the property located west of Colton. We'll go ahead and open this public hearing. If anyone has any public comment, if you please step to the microphone, state your name and address. We have three minutes. Having heard no public comment, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is approval of the previous session minutes dated May, council meeting minutes dated May 1st, 2023.
Most approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. And now, we have the acceptance of the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting minutes dated February 8th, 2023. Do I have one from the second?
Most approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Now, we will call the standing committees. First, we have community development. Chairwoman Foster is not here tonight, filling in for Vice Chairwoman Bogus. Vice Chairwoman Bogus, you have the floor.
Thank you. The community development has five items, six items tonight to discuss. The first one being a presentation by the Central Business and Cultural District, CB, CD.
I'm Chris Pascalitz, the chairman of the board of the Soudia Main Streets, and we are here tonight to talk about the annual report. All right, we got slides. You have to work without slides tonight. All right, well, let's start. On our grounds maintenance, we budgeted 1,500. Our facade program was 2,500, or 25,000, excuse me. On our pavilion restrooms, we budgeted 50,000. On special events was 20,600. That includes Thanksgiving, fireworks, Scott Joplin, the Criterion, First Thursday's quarterly business mixers, and other events, totaled including $98,700. And basically, that brings us to what we've, the tax, the building tax is $40,908. And anticipated revenue at the same rate is 41,726. The fund balance is 115,323.80, with revenue of 157,49.80. The budget for 2024 is 98,700 at the same rate, same tax rate. I got it. The current taxation is to say at the return of tax rate is .8258 per thousand assessed value equation. Sorry, couldn't read that part.
Any council questions or discussion?
Same rate as last year, right?
Yes.
Well, I apologize for the, having those slides loaded, it's about a ton, about a ton. That's okay. Thank you, Chris.
Our second item tonight is a rezoning application of 117 East Jefferson Street, R3C1. The owners of the property at 117 East Jefferson Street have applied to rezone a portion of this property. The property currently has split zoning. In that part of it is zoning C1, local business, and part R3, multifamily residential. On the portion of the property that is zoned C1, they are currently operating a beauty salon, and they'd like to expand this facility onto the portion of the lot that is zoned R3. Therefore, they have requested that the zoning for the lot, the whole lot, become C1 to allow this expansion. And the application was reviewed by Planning and Zoning Commission, and they recommend approval of the rezoning. Staff and the commission found that the rezoning would be consistent with surrounding views and the comprehensive plan, and in general, the interest of the, in the general interest of the property.
Any council discussion regarding the ordinance for the rezon? Having heard none, call for the reading of the ordinance. Bill number 2023-78. An ordinance granting a change in zoning classification from R3 multifamily to C1 local business on certain property located at 117 East Jefferson in the city of Soudia, Missouri, in accordance with Chapter 64 of the city code of the city of Soudia, Missouri.
Second reading.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Bill number 2023-78. An ordinance granting a change in zoning classification from R3 multifamily to C1 local business on certain property located at 117 East Jefferson in the city of Soudia, Missouri, in accordance with Chapter 64 of the city code of the city of Soudia, Missouri.
Second.
Rule call, please. Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster, Zappson, Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Seven yes, one.
Our third item for tonight is annexation of property owned by state, by the State of Missouri Department of Agriculture. At the last meeting, a public hearing was held to hear comments about the appropriateness of an annexation petition for a property purchased by the state to expand the fairgrounds. No comments were made during or after the meeting. Now that the required time period since then, the hearing has passed, council can consider an ordinance to annex the property into the city. Staff recommends approval.
Any council discussion regarding the annexation of this property?
It's exciting, to have more of the fairgrounds in our city.
That's right. All right, call for the reading of the ordinance. Bill number 2023-79. An ordinance of the city of Soudia, Missouri approving and annexing an unincorporated area owned by the State of Missouri Department of Agriculture by and through the State Fair Commission into the city of Soudia, Missouri, adjacent and contiguous to existing corporate limits of said city.
Second reading.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Bill number 2023-79. An ordinance of the city of Soudia, Missouri approving and annexing an unincorporated area owned by the State of Missouri Department of Agriculture by and through the State Fair Commission into the city of Soudia, Missouri, adjacent and contiguous to existing corporate limits of said city.
Final passage.
Second.
Rule call, please. Cross.
Yes.
Foster, Zappson, Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall. Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Seven yes, one.
Our next item is another annexation of property owned by E.W. Thompson, Inc. At the last meeting, a public hearing was held to hear comments about the appropriateness of an annexation petition for property along 10th Street just west of Winchester. No comments have been received. Now that the required time period since the hearing has passed, council can consider an ordinance to annex the property into the city. Staff recommends approval.
Any council discussion regarding the ordinance?
I just thank Diane Simon and David Thompson for the continued support with this community. There you go.
All right, call for the reading of the ordinance. Bill number 2023-80. An ordinance of the city of Soudia, Missouri approving and annexing an unincorporated area owned by E.W. Thompson Incorporated into the city of Soudia, Missouri, adjacent and contiguous to existing corporate limits of said city.
Second reading.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Bill number 2023-80. An ordinance of the city of Soudia, Missouri approving and annexing an unincorporated area owned by E.W. Thompson Incorporated into the city of Soudia, Missouri, adjacent and contiguous to existing corporate limits of said city.
Final passage.
Second.
Rule call, please. Foster, Zappson, Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Seven yes, one.
And item number five tonight is bid and agreement survey and inventory of buildings and structures west central Soudia residential area. The city has been awarded a grant to expand the area being considered for historic preservation district, and the grant will help offset the cost to perform an architectural survey and inventory of historically significant structures. Staff issues a request for qualifications to select a qualified firm to conduct the survey. Three proposals were received, and Rhonda Chelfa, PHD, submitted the lowest and best proposal in the amount of $49,900. Staff recommends authorization to enter into an agreement for these services at this price. Need to add that it's quite below what we had thought it was going to cost us to do.
Any council discussion regarding the ordinance authorizing an agreement?
Is it the expansion between towers? Yeah. Sorry.
Two meeting people can hear. Yes, that's an expansion of the survey to determine not only Victorian Towers neighborhood, but are there other existing neighborhoods in that area that could be carved out also as historic districts? So it's a more comprehensive approach that the state wanted us to take to this project.
Mayor, there's got to be several historic homes in that area. Mayor and I had a conversation with a gentleman at the Quodis practice, and last September, October, his home was put on the National Register for Historic Homes. So I'm excited.
Mr. Yount.
Has that tuner down off Third?
Yeah, Mr. Yount.
Yeah.
Or the Yount House.
All right, any other council discussion, any questions? Call for the reading of the ordinance. Bill number 2023-81. An ordinance authorizing an agreement for an architectural survey and inventory of buildings and structures in the west central residential area in the city of Soudia, Missouri.
Second reading.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Bill number 2023-81. An ordinance authorizing an agreement for an architectural survey and inventory of buildings and structures in the west central residential area in the city of Soudia, Missouri.
Final passage.
Second.
Rule call, please. Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster, Zappson. Seven yes, one.
Our final item tonight is a consent letter from Amtrak ADA stations replacement of platform. Amtrak ADA stations program has conducted an Americans with Disabilities Act ADA compliance assessment of our Amtrak depot, and has designed improvements to make the platform ADA compliant. These improvements will be completely funded through the federal program. Since the property is owned by the city, they need consent to construct the improvement.
All right, any council discussion regarding the ordinance, authorizing the consent letter? Having heard none, call for the reading of the ordinance. Bill number 2023-82. An ordinance authorizing a consent letter for replacement of Amtrak station platform.
Second reading.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Bill number 2023-82. An ordinance authorizing a consent letter for replacement of Amtrak station platform.
Right, right, good. Second.
Rule call, please. Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster, Zappson, and Bliss.
Yes.
Seven yes, one.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question before we go to the next? Did we have to approve the rate that Chris mentioned for the downtown district?
No, we did that just a public hearing.
Just a public hearing, and later we'll approve that rate?
In August, I believe. Yeah, yeah, it's August.
Okay.
This is just, this is an annual report that's required.
Now, and later we.
And the, that body is the recommended body, so they're given their recommendation on you to consider that in August.
Okay, I couldn't remember if we had to approve the rate tonight or August, I'm sorry.
No problem at all. All right, moving on to finance administration. Chairman Marshall, you have the floor.
I have two nights on my report tonight. First up is our finance director, Jessica Powell. Will provide an update on primary tax collections and trends.
All right, so we are looking at fiscal year-to-date March sales. So we're in our second month with sales and use tax, which is up in total almost 300, or a little over $311,000. And that's due primarily to higher sales tax because use tax has been lower. Franchise tax, we're reporting one month here fiscal year-to-date. It is higher, and it's due to the charter settlement. So you can see in the report, it's $375,414 higher than it was this time last year. But we received a settlement from Charter of $377,818, and that was past taxes for Voice Over Internet Protocol, VoIP. So they weren't sure whether they owed that, and it went to court, and they do. But they've appealed it to the Supreme Court. So that money still could have to be paid back to Charter, but we did receive the funds this month in the amount of $377,000. So that's why franchise tax is up so high. Transportation tax is higher due to the gasoline tax. This is a trend that we continue to see over the last several months, and it's up 35.6%. Property tax payments, we did collect more in April than we did last year. Majority of these, if you remember, are collected every December and January. Any questions on that portion?
Counselor Lawber, do you have any idea on as far as that? When would the Supreme Court would decide whether or not they were going to hear that case? Okay.
So in April, the voters passed a 3% marijuana tax, and the Missouri Department of Revenue has confirmed that that will go into effect October 1st. So businesses will file their first return with October sales, and that payment will come to us in December. So when I report to you at the council meeting in December, then that should include the first payment to us for the marijuana.
Any council questions or comments?
I think it's important to note, just with the property tax, there was a heated issue in Jet City. Just adjourned the other day, there was no, I don't think any piece of legislation went through Jet City passed changing any property tax issues this year. I just think that was important to note, and it's probably going to continue being discussed in the next incoming session.
Well, I thought they passed the legislature passed a deal to freeze the senior 65 and older.
That's, yeah, that's the one, but any other major property tax discussions or pieces of legislation didn't pass.
Does anybody know of any of the sales tax issues, Governor?
My understanding is that neither.
Nothing.
Doesn't appear to be. Only 64 bills.
Thank you, Jessica.
My second item is the call for an ordinance to add a micro-business definition to the business licensure section of the city code. Microbusinesses is being brought about with the recent constitutional amendment allowing recreational use of marijuana. Microbusinesses are defined as dispensaries that only sell recreational use marijuana.
Any council discussion regarding the ordinance? Having heard none, call for the reading of the ordinance. Bill number 2023-83. An ordinance of the city of Soudia amending the city code regarding the regulation of marijuana microbusinesses.
Second reading.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Bill number 2023-83. An ordinance of the city of Soudia amending the city code regarding the regulation of marijuana microbusinesses.
Final passage.
Second.
Rule call, please. Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster, Zappson, Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Seven yes, one.
That is all, right?
Thank you, Chairman Marshall. Up next, we have Public Works. Chairman Oldham, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. We have five items tonight. The first item we have is an ordinance for a authorization. Let's see here, this is approved a contract agreement with FDC for pump maintenance out of water and wastewater facilities. This contract, initial term is 17 months, and then a four, one-year extension.
All right. Any council discussion regarding the ordinance authorizing an agreement? It doesn't seem like we, we have that long to be able to put in this place. But time just flies. You replace the line of pumps. Yeah, we replace the line of pumps. That's right. All right, call for the reading of the ordinance. Bill number 2023-84. An ordinance authorizing an extension to the agreement for public drinking water facilities and wastewater facilities, pump maintenance repairs, and on-call emergency responders.
Second reading.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Bill number 2023-84. An ordinance authorizing an extension to the agreement for public drinking water facilities and wastewater facilities, pump maintenance repairs, and on-call emergency responders.
Final passage.
Second.
Rule call, please. Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster, Zappson, Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Seven yes, one.
Second item I have tonight is an amendment to the speed schedule. With the purchase of permanently an overlay machine we did last year, you're now burdened with an overstock of shavings. There was no, the staff has done some research for comparable pricing, and I found a solution to selling the asset. That price point is going to be $16.80 per cubic yard, or $12 per ton.
Wait a minute. That's. Did you say $12 per ton, or 16?
$16.80 per cubic yard.
We had a conversion factor of 1.4 per yard, per cubic yard. And so that's.
I thought I heard 16 and 12. I'm not following that. 1680 per ton.
Per cubic yard.
Per cubic yard.
Per cubic yard.
I understand.
Yeah, we're in both dollars a ton. Basically, we did that so that we could sell it by yard, so that we don't have scale at these places where we're loading it. So if we just load it with a three-yard cut, we can estimate the $12 a ton at 1680.
So we're going to start selling it to the public?
Yeah.
Yeah, and we had anyone interested in purchasing?
Yeah, a couple people have been quiet.
And you think it weighs 100, you think it weighs 104 pounds per cubic yard? Or give me, what'd you say the weight per cubic foot? How'd you make that conversion?
1.4 pounds per cubic yard.
Your theory on this is that more people will buy more by the ton than by the square foot.
Well, we don't have a scale.
I understand that. But, but.
If they're equal to things, unless.
Okay.
It's the same price, or it's intended to be the same price. If that conversion factor is right, we moved it up.
I, I know, it's just something jumped at me. I looked at it earlier. We can make a correction, it's not right. Something's, something's not right to me, but let's go ahead, and we'll correct it if it's wrong.
Any other council discussion? Having heard none, call for the reading of the ordinance. Bill number 2023-85. An ordinance adding street department asphalt milling fees to the city's speed schedule.
Second reading.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Bill number 2023-85. An ordinance adding street department asphalt milling fees to the city's speed schedule.
Final passage.
Second.
Rule call, please. Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster, Zappson, Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Seven yes, one.
Third item I have tonight is an ordinance that we get to pass every year, and it is to have the allowance of overnight camping and parking in Liberty Park. This is for an event that happened annually, called the Big Bam on Katy Trail, and that is bikers. It's not a factory. Bikers across Missouri, there we go. And this is an event that brings in, I don't know how many bikers, at least a lot, a hundred, a couple hundred bikers, and they come in, and I believe there's also taxis, and there's shuttles that take them all over across town. So it's a great asset, and a great event for our community.
All right, any council discussion regarding the ordinance? Having heard none, call for the reading of the ordinance. Bill number 2023-86. An ordinance allowing overnight camping slash parking in Liberty Park for the big bikers across Missouri, Bam on the Katy event on Monday, June 5th, 2023.
Second reading.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Bill number 2023-86. An ordinance allowing overnight camping slash parking in Liberty Park for the big bikers across Missouri, Bam on the Katy event on Monday, June 5th, 2023.
Final passage.
Thank you.
Rule call, please. Hiller.
Yep.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster, Zappson, Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus. Boggis.
Yes.
Seven yes, one.
Fourth item I have tonight is a resolution and an ordinance for a budget amendment for the pictometry budget. Um, during the budgeting process, there's some confusion of the costs associated with flyover imaging, imagery used for the county-wide geographic informational, information system, the GIS. The city entered into a cooperative agreement with the county in twenty-eleven. Under this agreement, the city is to pay for the images used to overlay the GIS layers. And the city and the county agreed to share the GIS layer database information with entity, each entity creating. The flyover imagery is to be updated every two years in accordance with this agreement. Since these updates are only created every other year, it was assumed the payment was only needed on a biannual basis. However, the vendor has agreed to spread the payment across two years for our budgeting convenience. The cost of the last imagery created in twenty-two was ninety thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars. And half was paid in April of twenty-two. The other half remains due. The staff recommends a budget amendment to appropriate the funds to fulfill the task of the year.
Any council discussion? Under that agreement, is the county, what's the county... Hang on a minute.
Uh, the county, um, generates a lot of that and they, I, you know, they provide the beacon where we all, um, so I, I don't know what that beacon costs. And I don't know what, uh, what it costs to create the data, the underlying data, the underlying GIS, um, and all of that. And then the workers, we add, we add like the water, super all the things that, um, that you add. But, um, you know, you get all your parts of that out and you get the records off of some of the people who also involved or how that is.
Yeah. Any council discussion regarding the ordinance?
Devin, let's hear it. I'll give you more details in our side.
Have you heard none? Call for the reading of the ordinance, or the resolution, I'm sorry.
Resolution two thousand twenty-three. A resolution of the city council of the city of Sedalia, Missouri, stating facts and reasons for the necessity to amend and increase the city's annual budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four.
Much to approve.
Second.
Call of the favor.
Aye.
Call of the post.
Thank you.
Now we will call for the reading of the ordinance with regards to this budget amendment.
Bill number two thousand twenty-three eighty-seven. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four regarding public works pictometry.
Second reading. Second.
Rule call please. Oh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Call of the post. Thank you.
Bill number two thousand twenty-three eighty-seven. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four regarding public works pictometry.
Final passage. Second.
Rule call please.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster's absent. Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Boggis.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Seven yes, one.
This, and final item I have tonight is another amendment to the fee schedule. Uh, this is an opportunity to provide more to the residents than their waste issues. The staff is recommending adding the twenty-three yard trash containers to the fee schedule. For the initial, uh, set is four hundred dollars, but for any additional empty, uh, it will be three hundred dollars. And that's somebody who is currently remodeling their home. This might help me quite a bit.
Any council discussion regarding...
I have a question. Yeah. Is there a time limit on how long they get these containers?
I had mine, and I can't remember what, it was just a plain construction dumpster. I can't remember the size of it. I had mine for, for a couple of weeks and they reached back out to me to make sure that, uh, I was doing okay and if it was time to get it fixed. So, it didn't last too long.
For a bunch of three-one-twos, right? A bunch of three-one-twos.
Yeah, at some point, then everyone need to go ahead and empty it and get it back.
I would think we have a time limit.
And so the other thing is, is the longer you have one of those big containers sitting out next to your property, the more chance there is somebody's going to come along and fill it up for you. So it's kind of in your best interest to get it filled and get it down the road. Otherwise, you're going to be saying just dispose somebody else's junkie.
The staff does a pretty good job about staying in contact with the renters of the...
Any other council discussion?
I have similar experience.
Well, having heard none, we'll call for the reading of the ordinance.
Bill number two thousand twenty-three eighty-eight. An ordinance amending section forty-eight, forty-nine of the city's code of ordinances regarding an additional fee for the twenty-yard container rental and incorporating said fee into the city's fee schedule.
Second reading. Second.
Call of the favor.
Aye.
Call of the post.
Thank you.
Bill number two thousand twenty-three eighty-eight. An ordinance amending section forty-eight, forty-nine of the city's code of ordinances regarding an additional fee for a twenty-yard container rental and incorporating said fee into the city's fee schedule.
Final passage. Second.
Rule call please.
Foster's absent. Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Boggis.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Seven yes, one.
That is all I have. You're right.
Thank you, Chairman Oldham. Before we move on to point information, Steve, I ran a quick, uh, Google search. And it's saying that, uh, one yard of asphalt milling weighs from one point two to one point six tons. So I think they, that's how they landed on one point four tons.
I was just doing, yeah, I, we'll, yeah, I, I think we'll, I, I've got a little bit different answer, but we'll go over it.
Sounds good. All right.
I got six, I got sixteen twenty instead of sixteen. Did you say sixteen eighty? We'll go through it. It's close. I think you're right.
All right. Thank you, Chairman Oldham. Up next, we have public safety. Chairman Robinson, you have the floor.
Uh, to their continuing credit, police department, the fire department has begun applied for and received grants. Um, I would like to, gee, we're going to talk about the lease grant and then we'll talk about the fire department.
Sure. So the peace officer grant that's, uh, we're discussing tonight, uh, we applied for it. It is a matching grant. And we're able to, to match or make our match through, uh, donations from local organizations. Um, that grant offers us about nineteen thousand dollars in matching funds, um, which gives us close to, it's around thirty-nine thousand dollars that will pay for, um, a special rifle-rated vest for our special response team.
I thought the donation part of that was what was really great. Yeah, it was covered that.
Very fortunate and blessed to have a community like you.
Yes, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
So we need an ordinance, two ordinance, uh, we need a resolution and two ordinance to, to that.
Okay, call for the reading of the first ordinance.
Bill number two thousand twenty-three eighty-nine. An ordinance authorizing the acceptance of a peace officer grant for the Sedalia Police Department.
Second reading. Second.
Call of the favor.
Aye.
Aye. Call of the post.
Bill number two thousand twenty-three eighty-nine. An ordinance authorizing the acceptance of a peace officer grant for the Sedalia Police Department.
Final passage. Second.
Rule call please.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Boggis.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster's absent. Seven yes, one.
Thank you. I will call for the reading of the second ordinance in regards to this matter.
Bill number two thousand twenty-three ninety. An ordinance approving and accepting the quote for the purchase of vests for the Sedalia Police Department.
Final pa- uh, second reading. Second.
Call of the favor.
Aye.
Call of the post.
Thank you.
Bill number two thousand twenty-three ninety. An ordinance approving and accepting the quote for the purchase of vests for the Sedalia Police Department.
Final passage. Second.
Rule call please.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Boggis.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster's absent. Bliss.
Yes.
Seven yes, one.
Okay, the fire department also, uh, was awarded grants through the Missouri Department of Public Safety. Would you, Chief, if you'd like to come up and give me a rundown on that, please?
So this is the same grant that the police department offer, uh, was just, we just approved, um, except we don't have as good as friends as they do. So these are for dual-band digital radios for the fire department that bring us kind of into compliance to be able to talk on Bushwind and be able to talk statewide and regionally, um, with all of our EMS, fire, police and sheriff's departments. So moving forward, all radios are going to be required to be dual-band. We're just, we're moving through. So this is a fifty-fifty balance. And I wish I had friends like the police department. That's it.
Thank you.
All right, any, uh, council discussion regarding the, uh, resolution and subsequent order? Have you heard none? Call for the reading of the resolution.
Resolution two thousand twenty-four. A resolution of the city council of the city of Sedalia, Missouri, stating facts and reasons for the necessity to amend and increase the city's annual budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four.
Much to approve. Second.
Call of the favor.
Aye.
Call of the post. Thank you, counsel. Uh, now we have the, uh, ordinance with regards to this matter. Call for the reading of the ordinance.
Bill number two thousand twenty-three ninety-one. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four regarding fire radio purchase.
Second reading. Second.
Call of the favor.
Aye.
Call of the post.
Thank you.
Bill number two thousand twenty-three ninety-one. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four regarding fire radio purchase.
Final passage. Second.
Rule call please.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Boggis.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster's absent. Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Seven yes, one. The next item is liquor licenses. Call for the reading of liquor licenses. We have one new license tonight for Christie Long Doing Business with Wildlife Raisin Wine Green, thirty-four, seven fifty-one Miller Road, Smithville, Missouri, for a picnic license for Scott Joplin Festival at the Pavilion, uh, for May thirty-first, June third, twenty twenty-three, at two hundred South of Five.
Much to approve. Second.
Call of the favor.
Aye.
Call of the post. Thank you, counsel. Now, we need to be any, uh, miscellaneous items from the city council or city administrator?
One, we have the white man replaying ceremony this Saturday, I believe at ten AM. I think that may be it, cemetery. And two, we had a really nice, uh, respect for law banquet hosted by, uh, the Optimist Club and Jason here, where we got to honor our precious fans. So thank you guys again for everything.
Thank you.
Great, uh, event, Jason.
Yeah, we had, uh, Mayor's Prayer breakfast while over the weekend. Uh, there's a neighborhood cleanup that happened and of course, Mother's Day. Everybody's got one for their mother. Celebrate the moms everywhere. Anything else? All right, well, having heard nothing else, we'll move on to the next portion of the meeting, which is good and welfare. If there are any, uh, people within the audience who would like to address council, go ahead and please, uh, step to the microphone, state your name, your address. You've got three minutes.
Okay, I get to be a citizen tonight. John Simmons, twenty-three oh six, First Street, there.
Second minute to Loria.
Well, this is about the Scott Joplin Festival. Just a reminder that it is coming up following Memorial Day weekend, starting May thirty-first, I believe. Um, at your seats tonight, you had a program as well as a complimentary CD from the foundation. They are donating five hundred CDs to the city that we can pass out at the Missouri State Fair this year. These were surplus CDs that their artists over the years had donated to the foundation, uh, to sell at the store. Um, they need to do an inventory reduction. So they picked out a really good one for you all to introduce you to ragtime if you haven't really exposed yourself to it before. Um, and what else? Don't forget about the Sedalia concerts, which will be Thursday, Friday and Saturday evening. Jack Robinson's son, Chris, is organizing those and those will be at the Pavilion each evening during the festival for modern contemporary music to enjoy for locals. Um, I think that's it. Just want to remind you, it's a big, big event. Got to keep that thing going and get it back up to strength after COVID. So, thank you all.
Yeah, there'll be some concerts. There ain't been a much different generation of music lovers. Um, so that'd be, two of them are contemporary. One of them is a gospel choir. So there's something for everybody, certainly.
Who's the gospel choir?
Melvin Kerr.
Is it Melvin Kerr?
And local, and local people that want to participate. Anybody that wants to go.
Absolutely. If you want to join the choir, you just come on, um, Friday night at six-thirty to Burns Chapel and become a member of the choir.
Oh, I'll be there. My classmate was Melvin Kerr.
Really?
And what a wonderful experience for me.
Yeah.
Smith Cotton with Melvin over the years.
He said, anyway, if you want to, you want to participate, you just show up at Burns Chapel Friday night.
Hey, you guys got all that down in under three minutes?
Who the fuck is...
Uh, go ahead and say anything, counsel. Come on up. Say your name, your address. You got three minutes.
Renee Vance, one nine eight one three, Tanglenook. As you all know, that I am a senior advocate as well as the Hudson, the Pettis County representative for the Silver Hairred representative, which we were really tickled to have those tax bills, as you said, passed. Uh, what I am going to ask or tell you about tonight is the senior centers gala will be held June twenty-fourth. We are a local nonprofit organization that, as you well know, serve over six thousand meals. Over, almost five thousand of those are homebound. Uh, our gala is going to be, is going to honor three local seniors. Uh, one of them will be Mr. Alan Hawkins. So we would hope that the council would be there to support. Uh, I will have tickets if you're interested or a table. Uh, we also have honorees coming for, uh, State Fair, Community College will be honored as well as a both will. So please get your tickets, twenty-fourth, save the date and listen and hear our stories for the seniors. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't get the time and the place. Five o'clock. Five, and it will be at Hecker.
The tickets are fifty dollars or...
How much for a table?
Uh, there are eight in a table, four hundred.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Vane. Anyone else who'd like to address council? Don't be shy. Well, having heard none, I will entertain a motion to second and move to...
Close to the close for our session to legally advise real estate personnel in negotiating contracts.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Rule call please.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Boggis.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster's absent.
Yes.
Come on, Paul. Give it a peek here.
This conference will now be recorded.